I'm going to open tonight's meeting in the Board of Selectmen for the 25th of April, 2012. Eighteenth. Thank you, because I was actually holding the wrong agenda in my hand. Thank you. Eighteenth of April, 2012. And before we start tonight, I wanted to extend the board's thoughts and prayers to the family of Robyn Harvey. It was a tragedy last night, and I understand she is in critical condition still in Boston. And I thought we would make that mention and hope with all the community service and wonderful community individual that she's been, that we think of her tonight. Thank you. All right, first item tonight is our acceptance of the agenda. Any changes tonight? Seeing none. Announcements. Libby.
We just have the one announcement regarding 2012 Committee, Board, and Commission vacancies. There is a lot of information online about what openings are upcoming, and I think there's a timeline on online, too. I'll just quickly make mention of it. We're in the process of notifying committee members whose terms are expiring and asking if they want to be reappointed or not. We will be advertising the committee openings in the newspaper, and they're on the town website. May 18th is deadline number one for a group of committees. We're doing this in groups. We have one public hearing to hear applications for one group, a second public hearing on a different night to have applications for the different group. And again, this is all online. So there are two deadlines. The initial deadline is May 18th. The second deadline is May 25th. So it's probably too much to read everything that's due on what date, but it's all online. And if people are interested, they should obtain a committee interest form, which is also online, complete it and submit it by the deadlines, and we'll have a public hearing. Then appointments will be made on June 27th.
Okay, and I just want to reemphasize that we've really made an effort in past years to fill all of our vacancies, and we encourage everyone to think about ways that they can participate. It's a great way to get started and/or to join all of us in terms of our dialogue about the town. The way that they're split, by the way, just in case you're interested to know, this is alphabetically. Energy Study is the last one on May 18th, and Finance Committee is the first on the 25th. So again, it's just a rough way of outlining. All right, any more announcements, Libby?
That's all I've got.
Okay. Public comment. Is there anyone here tonight to participate in public comment that is not on the agenda? Justin.
Hi, my name's Justin Quinn. I live at 15 New Lane, and I request that the speed limit there is 30 miles an hour, and I request it go drop down to 20. I have two dogs, two little kids, and came to ride the bike to get the bike path on Manneken Road without losing our -- almost losing our life. If you look at the other streets, Prospect and Quaker, they're both posted at 20, and they're wider streets. New Lane's a much narrower street. There's no sidewalk. The other 30 mile an hour streets nearby is Hummock Pond Road, Cliff Road, and Manneken Road. I just think it's ridiculous that New Lane should be 30. Let's drop it down to 20.
All right. Comments from the board? Questions?
Justin, I did a little research into this, and Erica's on traffic safety, and she informs me that it's a state law that says the speed limit can't be lowered there.
Actually, the state law, MGL 90, Section 18, says that the selectmen have the power to lower the speed limit.
Okay. Because according to the chief, or according to past council, we don't have that power. So I think we need to get clarification from new council if that's the case.
And generally, every time there's a request to change a speed limit, it goes through a process, and it starts with traffic safety. So certainly, this can be brought to their next meeting.
The law clearly states that all it needs to do is be posted in the newspaper twice.
Then it might require a public hearing, which we are not advertised for tonight. The board's policy also is not to take action on public comment items. And the process set forward for years is to go through traffic safety first.
Have you made the request of traffic safety?
No.
Okay.
I was told, well, I was told it couldn't be done, but then I researched it myself, and it clearly states that a mayor, the selectmen, they all have the power to lower the speed limit.
Okay. Why don't we do this? Why don't we ask new council for that, and I'll let you know.
90, Section 18.
And then what we'll probably do, Justin, and again, we don't typically make decisions tonight, but we'll ask you to go through traffic safety with the recommendation from council.
And their next meeting is May 2nd?
First.
First. May 1st.
It's just the posted speed limit of 30 is actually at the end of New Lane by the cemetery, which is a couple hundred feet from the stop sign, which makes no sense. Why should -- you're posting 30 miles an hour and then the stop sign. If you go to Prospect and Quaker, it's got pedestrian signs, it's got slow down, it's got children to play, you know, there's double lines.
And by the way, those are other options, too, that maybe if you, you know, in terms of requesting, if we are stuck on the speed limit, we were just talking prior to the meeting about this, and, you know, there are other signs that you can request of traffic safety to put on post on the road. Okay? So again, just next step as far as it goes, okay?
Thank you.
I would suggest that you go to the traffic safety meeting on the 1st and reiterate what you just said to us, and in the meantime, we'll get clarification from councils if we can lower the speed limit or not. And I'll let you know when we find out, or Patty, well, one of the two of us.
Okay.
Okay.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment tonight? Yes, sir.
My name's Billy Sherry. This might be a little different request. I'm a sculptor, and I just recently completed a 10-foot-tall daffodil made out of steel.
And just in time for the weekend.
Just in time for the weekend.
Might be the only one left on the island.
We need it. I didn't get it ready for last year, but this year I decided I've got to get it ready at least, you know, for the weekend. And it might be the only daffodil left by the time we get there, but I was just wondering if the town is interested in helping me display it for the weekend, daffodil weekend.
Sure. What'd you say?
This Chamber of Commerce.
Okay.
It's steel, abstract, and, you know, as you can see.
Do you want to make mention of your recommendation, Whitey?
My -- have you run it by my sister yet? She's a daffodil expert.
Well.
This is the third week in a row.
We could work on that.
We're going to need her as a consultant the weeks before daffodil. Bobby, you want to say something?
You know, I would run it through the chamber and see what they think, and then I guess, you know, if they don't have a place for it, Billy, I mean, I wouldn't mind seeing it up for the weekend and then take it back down.
It might be kind of fun. I mean, it's like not forever, but.
No, exactly. It would just be, you know, obviously daffodil weekend, and.
Claudia's thinking of the rotary.
Stick it in the rotary, yeah.
You know, that new rotary needs something in the middle. Those shrubs are dying in there.
Well, the parade goes by the old one, so that would be kind of fun.
That's what I was thinking about.
Can I just say about the old one? That is a veterans memorial, and they tend to get.
How about on the water company property, right at the beginning of Miles?
I like that new rotary.
Yeah, I do, too. I think that the roundabout there at Sparks Avenue has nothing in the middle of it. You know, we could put it in there. It'd be kind of neat.
Do we have to vote on it?
I'll make the motion. I'll second the motion that Billy put it in there, what, the Thursday before, put it in the Thursday before daffodil and take it out the Monday after. Does that work for you, Billy?
Oh, of course, yeah.
Just don't let HCC know. I don't know.
Art is exempt, isn't he?
Keep it a secret.
HCC. Yeah, see if they approve daffodil.
Well, it's hard. You never know.
Yeah, you never know. Well, I think we have a motion, and do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Boosted.
You have unanimous consent to put it right there in the middle.
Just make sure when you put it in that it's secure, no kids tip it over.
Well, no, it's, obviously, I have to, the logistics I can run by this week, and perhaps maybe the DPW can be involved. I don't know if that's possible. Yeah. Perhaps a DPW can be involved. I don't know. It's with installation.
Maybe we can do it without all the --
Call Erica.
Just call Erica.
You can see, exactly.
All right.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Billy.
All right.
The only daffodil left by the weekend.
That's true. All right, new business. Oh, sorry. Any other public comment? I'm sorry, Dan.
Madam Chairman, Dan Drake, Chairman of the Airport Commission. If I may just bring you up to date, some of this is a bit superfluous because it's been in the press already, but on our manager search situation, the commission, after a weekend of assessment and interviews, four candidates selected a gentleman named Thomas Rafter, who is currently the airport manager in Atlantic City, New Jersey, has been employed by the Atlantic City Airport all of his working life, is looking for a variety of reasons for a change and seemed best suited to what we need here, both in terms of his skills and his interests. So I'm pleased about that. It's not a done deal yet. We're still working out some of the details, but our anticipated start date, what we're trying to work out, is June 1st. Parenthetically, you may recall that Bill McGrath's contract deal was for six months because of the state law and his conflict of interest. I've talked, he's interested in staying until, say, June 10th in some capacity. So I'm working with town council to try to figure out a way to do that. I think it would be very helpful to have that transition and would save a number of us a lot of angst. So hopefully, that will work out. Tom is 53 years old. He has a wife named Trish. He has three children. I think one of them's about to go off to school. Probably initially, he will be looking for transitional housing, and coming to the island on the, around the 1st of June is a tough time. So if anybody here in the audience knows, hears, gets wind of anything that might be suitable for a family of five for short-term rental, that would be very helpful and could contact the airport office or me, or if there's anything out there. The other thing I'd like to do is just mention that we did have this assessment center on Sunday, which was conducted by the search firm but with the assistance of 11 members of the community who stepped forward and gave up their entire Sunday of the holiday weekend in order to do this and did, as best I can determine, a super job. The process, which Libby Gibson had suggested, was an excellent process and just put another dimension, another tool in the toolbox, as this recruiter said, to help in the process. And it was wonderful, and I want to thank specifically those people who participated and everybody else who's been part of this process. Keep our fingers crossed that it works out. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan, and I appreciated the opportunity to meet the candidates as well on Saturday evening. The Rosen Crown had a chance to talk to all four of them and did meet Rafter, right? Mr. Rafter? Tom Rafter? All right. Any other public comment tonight? Matters not on the agenda? All right, then, let's move to new business. Seeing none, move to approval of minutes warrants and pending contracts. We have the approval of minutes of 2nd of April, 2012, 4th of April, 2012, and 11th of April, 2012. Any comments on the minutes? Seeing none, those are approved. Approval of payroll warrant for week ending 15 April, 2012. Comments there? Seeing none, that is approved. Approval of treasury warrant for 18 April, 2012. Again, seeing nothing, that is approved. And finally, approval of pending contracts for 18 April, 2012, as set forth on the spreadsheet, identified as Exhibit 1, which exhibit is incorporated herein by reference. Libby, do you want to walk us through?
The first item is tabled from last week, and you all wanted to hear from the procurement officer as to the details of the three-year contract for propane. So Diane O'Neil is here to review that and answer any questions that you may have.
Thanks, Diane.
You're welcome. The invitation for bid, it's a three-year contract. It is a fixed price per year on operating expense and profit. So the vendor will bid a fixed price per year, which this year is 99 cents, and then the town pays the price that they pick up per gallon at the station in Rhode Island. So the price fluctuates every two weeks. I get an email with the new price, which I think you have in your packet, from the Gas Supply Resource LLC. So we add the 99 cents plus whatever the price is for that two-week period, and that's what the town pays per gallon for that two-week period.
Bobby?
Diane, so the $330,000, is that the 99-cent fee of it? So the gas is on top of that, or is that the total with the gas?
It's the total what we've paid the vendor for the last three years. I don't have anything else to base that price.
Okay. Yeah, so I just was curious if it was just the markup or if it was the markup and the gas?
It's everything.
Okay.
There is a price increase for the new contract. It was $1.40 per year for the, starting July 1st until June 30th, and then it's $1.25 a year for the following two years. But that is, like I said, plus the price that they pick it up at the pump, so to speak.
And this was the sole bidder?
That was the sole bidder, yes.
Rick, did you have a?
Just to follow up, was it the same arrangement, the prior contract?
Yes.
So they bid, and so you mentioned 99?
99 cents is the price that will complete this fiscal year, per gallon.
This fiscal year, and then next year it jumps?
To $1.40.
To $1.40. So that's a substantial difference, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
And then after the first year, does it go up each year? Is that what I heard?
No, he bid $1.40, and then they bid $1.25 and $1.25 for fiscal year that begins July. It'll be fiscal year 15.
So that's the markup for each year. So the markup goes down the second two years?
Yeah. Doesn't normally happen that way, but yes, in this case it does.
Just one more if I know.
Sure.
How did we end up with the outfit in Rhode Island as the party that determines the commodity price, if you will?
That is just where both vendors pick up their propane.
That happens to be, and others were Yates and Nantucket Energy.
Yes, and the Nantucket Energy.
So they had to sort of agree before the bid that that was the location? Or did you specify the location?
No, I specified that. That's where it's always been, and that's where they get their propane. I assume that's the only place they can get it. I don't know that, but it's my assumption.
Just a little bit curious, because they're setting the primary commodity price, and I'm not sure what their business is. Because I think with fuel oil, you were picking a price.
From the Journal of Commerce out of Boston. Right.
So that's a little different kind of an arrangement than this, where this is a private party. Is it real, or in the gas business, or what is it?
It's kind of the same arrangement. We bid the operating expense, just for, the same we do with fuel, oil, and gasoline, and we pay the Journal of Commerce price the day it comes into Boston. Now, the difference is, fuel oil comes in every single day, so I get an email every single day from the Journal of Commerce, and it tells us the price of that day. So the day of delivery, that's the price that the town pays, plus the operating expense. This is an every-two-week thing.
Right. Okay. I just was sort of somewhat curious about what business the company's in that's setting the price.
I don't know for sure. I think it's the equivalent of a spot market price. I think it's an industry.
I agree.
It's a fluctuating industry price.
Yeah, I believe that this is the distributor for the New England area.
Okay, that's enough. Thank you.
Whitey? Did you have a comment?
No, Rick already asked the question.
Anyone else come, question first?
I just wondered, when we only get one bid, do we have to accept a bid? And can we go back and try to, you know, put it out for bid a second time? Do we have a policy on that?
I'm going to ask the procurement officer.
We really don't. We only have two suppliers on the island, and in speaking with the other supplier, it's difficult because it's a three-year bid, and Yates Gas owns all of the tanks. So in order for the other vendor to competitively bid, he'd have to purchase all new tanks. So I think that may be the reluctance. I don't know that, but I can't speak for him.
Okay, so we, with this contract, we typically only get one bid for other?
Well, no, last time we did get two, and I think that's in your packet.
But why would there be a difference this time with the?
I don't know why he didn't bid.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Sorry.
All right, any other comments, questions? Thanks, Diane. All right, any further comments on the Libby?
There's a couple other contracts. We also have a concession, a three-year lease for Children's Beach Concession through Park and Rec with Michael Caffrey, Good Food Brand, DBA, the Ac Shack, and we'll get $81,000 for the three years for that. That's been bid out. Yes?
Why the negative number?
That just means revenue. We're not paying. He's paying us.
It's sort of like our P&Ls, remember, when they had the enterprise funds?
When they're coming in, not going out.
It's a little backwards.
Libby, is this a different price than the last three years? Is it higher, lower, or is it the same party we're doing business with, or a different party?
Different party.
It's a different party. The minimum bid was $25,000 for the first year with a 2.5% increase over the previous year's bid for the duration of the contract. There were two other bidders. The other closest bidder was $80,625.
Wow.
Pretty close.
Wow.
I'm not sure what it was last time around. Do you remember, Diane?
So it's a new vendor, though.
Yes.
All right. Any other questions? Libby, the next one?
The next one is a $2,168 supply item contract amendment for the supply and installation of runs of damaged wire identified during the removal process. And I think this was, was this the water tower?
Yeah, has to be the water tower.
It was the water tower. It was the antenna system on the water tower, and when the vendor took it off, there are two runs of wire that were almost destroyed. They have to replace them. So it's a contract amendment.
And if you recall, the equipment had to be removed from the water tower so that it could be painted.
Which we're in the process of doing now.
Yes.
Okay.
So if it was their mistake, are they?
No, it was just, it was not damaged.
It was just deteriorated.
It was damaged from.
It was identified during, it was already damaged.
I didn't understand.
We also have.
Yeah.
What color are they painting it? It looks dark right now.
I think that's the primer.
Is that the primer? Okay.
Pink.
Someone will believe you.
Daffodil orange.
A yellow.
All right, finally.
Marine Department has an online mooring LLC vendor, $12,000. This is for the purchase of online mooring, an online mooring management system for software. And this is something we've been looking at for a little while now.
Sheila did quotes, and this is the low vendor, and actually, it was the only vendor that satisfied all the needs of the quote, so.
This is removing the paper trail of mooring permits and actually.
This is a new system?
Yep.
One take on? Hopefully save money?
People be able to sign up online, and tracking can be much better and monitoring.
Right now, it's all done on cue cards.
There's one other item that isn't on your pending contract list that came in very recently, like I think Friday or Tuesday or something like this, after the agenda was already out. And I'm going to have Greg explain it in place.
Thank you. This really isn't a contract, but it's seeking permission from the board for the town to respond to a bid from National Grid in order to sell the wind renewable energy credits that the wind turbine at the high school has generated. The town, through the Energy Office and through Diane O'Neil, has put together a bid to the Department of Energy Resources in order to sell renewable energy credits. We were recognized, and only got recognized last week, and National Grid has a bid out right now, which is due next Tuesday. They have an RFPL right now that's due next Tuesday, so we'd miss, we'd miss next Wednesday, of course, if we put it on the agenda. So we already have the response written through the Energy Office, and we're ready to go, but it's just up to the board whether we want to sell the credits. There's no cost to the town.
Questions?
Sounds like you ought to sell the credits. I mean, it's more money, and we missed a little bit of time, but not much, is my sense.
Yes, the Energy Office has been working for the past several weeks, soliciting the state in order to be able to sell credits, and it took a little time before the state recognized that the little wind turbine is producing more energy than expected, and so they allowed us to, the town, to sell up to 61 renewable energy credits per quarter. I don't know what that means in the grand scheme, but I do know it. It's 61 energy recs. And we just, we got our account number and everything else several weeks ago, but we just got the approval from DOE R last week. And it just so happens that National Grid has a bid out soliciting renewable energy credits that's due next Tuesday, so we figured we might as well jump on. And we'd like to move forward, if the board approves, continuing to sell renewable energy credits as approved by the state moving forward.
Okay. Any other questions? Whitey?
Is that just for this project, or if we had PB Solar, would that, would we have permission for that?
No, this is specifically for wind energy credits produced by that one meter.
Just one more. Is this, are you selling six months, a year? How much time is this sale for?
This is a good question. This particular one is just for the current quarter, where we just recognized, so it's the 61, and we're responding to a bid. We'd like to then move forward after this quarter and actually do the normal process, which is put the recs out there on the market, and then they can, they're almost like they're bid for. And that would be moving forward from next quarter onward.
Just to follow, because I remember discussing this, Whitey, with George Aronson, who, George was in the business, right, as a broker, a placement agent? So would we then find a placement agent to help us in the future, or do it directly?
Yes, that's correct. Actually, George wrote this response for us as part of his contract with the Energy Office. Moving forward, we're making the recommendation from town administration that for the next few quarters, we sell the recs at a discount and just get the money upfront. The other option is to get this broker, like you said, we'd have to bid out, get a broker, and have somebody sell them, and we just figured we'd not ready for that yet.
Right. In the meantime, if we do it direct, it's not for such a long period of time, so we're not committed forever.
Three quarters.
Good, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? I think we're going to have to have a motion on this.
Motion to approve.
Right, do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you very much. All right, that ends our section on the pending contracts. Oh, no, we didn't vote on all the contracts. We just voted on that one, didn't I?
Because without objection, we've got them.
Is that all right? No pushback? We're good? All right, we're officially on. Next section, Citizen Departmental Requests. First item, Request for Approval of Exemption on Disclosure by Municipal Employee of Financial Interest in a Municipal Contract for Bruce Perry as Required by Mass. General Law, Chapter 268A, Section 20B. And I see Mr. Perry's here, and we have some information in our packet. Do you want to give a little brief statement, Bruce, or anything that?
If you have questions, I'll answer.
All right. If we have any questions?
Just, I think we did this a year ago or so, and it's essentially the same thing.
Almost two years ago.
Do you have to come up every year, two years, or is this not good forever?
It's not good forever.
Which may be a fine thing, right?
If you could just also, just speak to the, the contract itself, maybe people then will know.
So, for the record, Bruce Perry, two years ago, the Conservation Commission put out a RFQ, or one of those letters, for technical services, and the company that I'm a partner in got the contract. At that time, I went to call the Ethics Commission because, working for the land bank, I'm kind of a strange fish in that I'm a municipal employee but not working for the town. But the same conflicts arise. So I talked with them, and they told me to do this disclosure, and the selectmen signed it, I think sometime in August, like around August 10th of two years ago, so that'd be 2010. Apparently, the Ethics Commission had an inquiry, and when they looked at the paperwork, they said that, that disclosure should have been signed by the Conservation Commission and the town, even though the town is the awarding authority, which is what the paperwork says. The awarding authority needs to sign it, so that's why I only went to the selectmen. So, I went through the process, and the Concom approved it three weeks ago. And so now it's back in front of you to sign off, so I could send it back up to the state.
Thank you very much. All right, do we have questions? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Bruce. Second item, Nantucket Housing Hunting Association, request to authorize town manager to sign National Heritage and Endangered Species Program, Massachusetts Endangered Species Act, MISA, application for Nantucket Shooting Range. Right, do we have anybody here from the hunting association?
Steve.
Or is it pretty straightforward? That's right, I saw Steve.
For the record, I'm Steve Holgate, President of the Nantucket Hunting Association. Here as applicant, or co-applicant, I guess I should say. And don't really have much to add. Hopefully, it's straightforward, and I'm available for questions if you have any.
Thanks, Steve. Any questions? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Steve. Next item, request for approval of expansion of serving hours for Jetties Beach, Inc., doing business as the Jetties for seasonal all alcoholic beverage restaurant license. J. Marshall Thompson, manager for premises located at 4 Bathing Beach Road, Nantucket. Marshall, I see you're here. Why don't we, questions, I'm going to guess, or the board have questions on the request?
Well, I'll say sort of my reaction. I think of Jetties Beach as a family beach, and I'm not sure extending the hours is really consistent with the use of our facility there. So I am concerned a little bit, and probably not in favor of extending the hours. I understand the request, but that's just a reaction I have to that location, and it's unique in that sense. So, just to share with you.
All right. We did have an issue, too. I'm going to maybe turn to Libby, too. There was a issue brought up about a couple of components that may be complicated, Marshall, in terms of the request itself. So, and we do need to check on them. One has to do with the, whether or not this has to be rebid, because the parameters of the original bid were pretty specific to the hours. So this might actually impact, you know, basically the current process. So we would have to go back. And there was, the second thing was, am I confusing that? Wasn't there another issue?
No, there was one thing.
There was one thing? Okay. So, if you don't mind, we'd kind of like to take a minute and look at that, and maybe withdraw that for tonight, and allow the board to check with council to make sure that we're going to do this correctly before we even get into a discussion. So, if that's all right. Procedurally, do we just withdraw it and then have it reapplied, or can we just?
I think you would just table it.
Table it.
Until we find out the answer to the procurement question.
So we just table it for a couple of weeks? Do we need it date-specific, or just table it until it comes back after?
Yeah, it's not a public.
We haven't got there yet.
If we have it by Friday, we can put it on next week.
So do you mind giving a call into the office, maybe Friday, and see if that's okay, where that stands? Because that may change whether you want to actually apply or not.
Well, for sure. Because, I mean, as I said in my letter to the Board of Selectmen on the bid five years ago, that's what I was told, that if I was allowed to expand my hours by the Board of Selectmen, it would trigger a rebid.
Okay.
But it was my understanding that the new contract that I'm just starting in 2012, the language was put in there to make it so it's, it specifically says in the contract that the Board of Selectmen have the ability to expand my hours.
Okay.
I think the idea behind that was to put it in your hands, because nobody wants to trigger a rebid.
Right.
But.
Well, let's just check on whether that was okay.
Yeah, sure.
And double-check, I should say. And, well, you know, if you could call the office, or Ann will call you, and we'll clarify that, and then you can decide about going forward or not, depending.
Okay.
And we'll get town council to take a look at it.
Yeah.
All right?
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Bruce.
One other, one other question. Is there a distinction between having a beer at lunch while you're sitting on Marshall's deck and being allowed to take it down onto the beach? Is that?
My premises, my official premises go down onto the beach, yes.
Okay. If it was an issue, would you be willing to make a distinction, particularly during the day?
Yeah, I mean, I'm willing to discuss any of that. But, you know, the way it's worked, you know, for the last five years, we've been serving at night alcohol with plenty of children around. And, you know, I would respectfully point that out and hope that you would take that into consideration in terms of the daytime thing. But the, and we, you know, we serve people, they sit in the beach chairs right outside. You know, we put a perimeter around that they can't go past, and we enforce that, you know?
Oh, you do? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not all the way down.
Yeah, they can't go, they can't go down to the ocean.
Okay.
I have an official perimeter. I think it's, I can't remember the exact thing. It's, it's mostly, it's fairly extensive, because, you know, I'm allowed to have functions. So my alcoholic beverage service premises are fairly big. But I don't let people go that far. It's about, I have it like 15 yards, 20 yards out. I put flags up and ask people not to go past that.
Okay, thank you.
And this has been useful, because you did make the trip here tonight, so I'm glad he's gotten some feedback.
Yeah.
But I think we, we will get in touch with you and see about whether or not we get this back on next week.
Right. So, we'll table any further discussion until we see whether I can do it without a rebid, in other words.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks for coming in, Marshall.
Question, Marshall.
Whitey, we're going to, we're going to put this.
Clarification. If you have a function there, does this apply to the functions such as the pops and things like that? Do you have control over that through your contract?
Does my contract allow me to do functions, you mean? Am I, am I under license serving?
Does the alcohol rules apply to something such as the, the?
I think they're a separate, they'd have to come in for their own pouring license, because they're a separate function. Say, the pops would, that's the word.
It doesn't trump.
No. They would have to come in for their own pouring license, correct, Marshall? When the pops are down there.
I'm allowed to do functions without special.
Right.
Permission from Board of Selectmen up to 250 people. Over 250, I have to come before Board of Selectmen for a special permit.
And separate entities are completely separate.
The pops is sort of a entity in itself, where I go away for two days, you know? And they, they come in and I assume get their own pouring license. I mean, they're pouring out in the parking lot, out in back of us, which isn't my premises. And, and I don't, I don't know if they pour. I've never sat up front there, so I don't know.
People pour themselves.
Okay. Thanks, Marshall.
Okay.
All right, we'll talk. Next item, request for approval of application of fish in the spread, doing business as 12 Degrees East for a change of manager for annual all alcoholic beverages restaurant license. Jonas M. Baker, manager for the premises located at 12 Cambridge Street, Nantucket.
Madam Chairman, I have to abstain from this.
Thank you. All right. We have an application before us for a change of manager. Does the board have any questions? Have a motion?
Move to approve.
Don't go far, Bobby. We have a motion. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. All right, now we start our public hearings. She told me I would have slowed it down.
That's all right.
First item, public hearing to consider license application for private shellfish grant for Matthew Herr. Open the public hearing. Anyone here tonight speak in favor of this application? Please identify yourself.
Tara Riley, Shellfish biologist for the town of Nantucket. Mr. Herr turned in an application for a four-acre lease up in the head of the harbor last month. He's met with Dave Franzudo, the harbor master, and myself, and given us his production plan. He's also met with the Shellfish Harbor Advisory Board for approval on this lease as well. And this area is in the head of the harbor, and it's pre-approved by the Division of Marine Fisheries for aquaculture.
Okay. Anyone else? Thank you very much. Anyone else here tonight speak in favor of this? We have a few, couple of notes and letters in our pack as well. Anyone here tonight to speak against? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
No problem to approve. But one question, does this use up all the pre-approved?
You'll see.
It looks like.
I believe there's still six acres.
Yeah, there should be approximately six acres left.
Oh, I see. There's the town of Nantucket section on the map.
Mm-hmm.
Gotcha. Okay, thanks.
And you can see the other people, names there of the leases that we've given.
Right.
Right. Okay. All right, do we have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Second item, public hearing to consider increase in private payroom and ancillary rates to begin applying interest on delinquent accounts at our island home. Did you want to give us a little background?
Rachel Cretchen, the administrator of the nursing home. We put in this request recently after a lot of budget review and things that me and the business office coordinator have done. Usually, for the private room rates, there was a large increase back for 2008. There was not one done in 2009. There was a small one in 2010. We are just looking to raise it just slightly. The reason why we're requesting to raise is based upon our 2010 cost report that's submitted to the state. Where our rates are for the cost per day to provide the service is still well below what our private rates are. We are still trying to get those in line. We believe that by raising it to 420 and 440, that'll be a lot closer. The 2010 cost report rate for cost per service for, per day was $448 and change. So this will bring it close to that. We believe that our 2011 will probably lower that a little bit. So we were hoping that, once that is officially filed, which has not been done yet, and we get the reports back from our accountant, we will find that our private rates and our actual cost per service for just the private pay residents will be about in line with each other. Going back in a lot of the research back to about 1996, the private rates have always been significantly lower than our actual cost per day. So we're just trying to get those in line so that at least we're not losing significant amount of money. The ancillary charges are just for the private pay patients who do not have any coverage under Medicare B or other insurances that would cover those services. The ancillary charges in particular relate to therapy services, PT and OT, the evaluations and the actual evaluation treatment time. The charges that were provided with you for the original that were there, or currently there, there is really no rhyme or reason to why those charges were the numbers that they were. So we tried to provide an actual legitimate formula so that we didn't actually lose money. In some cases, we were breaking even with our cost, or it was lower than what the cost of the service actually is to provide us with. Most of the ancillary services are covered under Medicare B or a resident's private insurance. We have not actually had to charge a private ancillary charge that I'm aware of in the past several years. The third request is to actually start charging interest on our delinquent accounts. We have a couple that are pending right now. Some of them go on for years. Some of them have just been in a matter of case to try and get the money after a resident passes from the estate. But current delinquent accounts that we are referring to are ones that just, the bills go out and they just don't come back paid. Most entities charge a service after so many days that the bill is not paid. We've never done that. We've been asked on numerous occasions by our accountant why we don't do that. We've never had an exact answer. So, that was it. Do you have any questions?
Any questions, Rachel? No. Rick?
Just one. Did I notice that you had a rough estimate of how much money you expect to bring in by the increase?
Yes.
What was, what was the number?
That number was.
Remember, something like 36,000?
I believe, based on current, it's 47,000.
Forty-seven. So, so that's how much more money the enterprise fund.
As long as our private center stays as it is.
Your senses could change, but given that assumption. And then one other question. On the fees, because we had some, a couple of contracts here several weeks ago, because some of these services are rendered by outside parties.
Mm-hmm.
So, do they pay our island home, and then you pay the other party? Or what's the system?
The other party is still billed as we bill under the contract. So the other party still bills us for their hourly rate.
Right.
For those services. So, for instance, for our OT, the cost of that evaluation could be roughly whatever we, we charge them per hour. So say the evaluation is $100 per hour, they would charge us the $100 for that hour evaluation. So we would actually.
Are you trying to balance those roughly?
We did.
So the charge?
We did.
You did. Thank you.
And I, and I recall from the last couple, two years ago, I believe, that the, the goal was to get to the, to the place where it was essentially meeting service with cost in terms of fee.
Yes.
Yeah, that's good.
So, any other questions for Rachel? All right. It's a public hearing. Anybody here tonight to speak against this increase, or at least the requests for the increase and the delinquent account fee? All right, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions, more questions of the board, consideration? Whitey?
Yeah. Have we considered a collection agency?
For delinquent accounts? Rachel, is there other actions, just for the record, that you've pursued with respect to these accounts?
No, we've never looked into an actual collection agency. The only thing that we've done on current accounts with current residents is we, I work with the families on many instances. And what has happened in a couple chances is that they haven't been able to pay, they've requested to pay a monthly fee. So we've worked that out with them in several cases. Those are for current residents that are currently there. For those residents that have already passed, and where they owe a charge, it's often in cases that we deal with the estate. What happens in those cases, it was, we work with the, we work with Elizabeth Brown, and she assists us in leaning any assets that they may have, such as homes. That's pretty much it.
Okay.
The cases that these actually apply to are very, very few. We don't have many delinquent accounts. So it's not, it's never gotten to the point where we've ever felt that it needs to go through a collection agency in that matter. We've always been able to work through it with the families or the residents.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah. Somebody can discontinue paying the private fee. Why don't they do that when they can't pay?
When they can't pay? As in they've resolved all their, all of their funds? Is that what you mean?
Well, apparently, the last time you were up here, if somebody said, "I can't pay", there was no way of checking that, whether they actually couldn't pay or not.
Mm-hmm.
So, if that does happen, then you have uncollectibles.
We could. Often, if they tell us, if they were a private person, and they tell us that they no longer have the ability to pay, they begin the process of applying for Mass. Health. If Mass. Health denies them, then we're in a whole different ballgame. What will often happen is we just end up leaning whatever property or assets that we know of. Other than that, we do have the right under certain regulations under the state, if very, very strict processes followed, to begin a discharge process of the individual who is refusing to pay.
And I, I just want to kind of focus us on the fact that we're looking at the delinquent account and a fee on it tonight, then maybe we can talk about how this all other operates when we, when we look at the budgets for that section. So, we've closed the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the board?
Well, I'd move that we approve the fee modifications as recommended by our island home.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And we've asked to have number three on our agenda withdrawn tonight, so we'll be moving right to four. Public hearing to consider application for new mobile food unit license for Blue Bellies, doing business as Blue Bellies. Thomas Berry, manager. Sorry, I have to smile, Thomas. You can tell me what, why the Blue Berry, Bellies.
Oh, well, the truck is blue. And I didn't want to repaint it. It's bright blue. It is a good question. I like the alliteration. And it was bright blue, and it's, we're kind of featuring whole belly clams, which is a New England staple. So they're the Blue Bellies, which we're trying to incorporate into the logo. And essentially, it's a, you know, mobile version of a New England clam shack, and serving waters, sodas, lobster rolls, clam rolls, and fries and chips, and some ice cream.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else here tonight to speak about the matter, either for or against?
Madam Chairman, can I just ask a question?
Sure.
This is at Nobody or Beach only?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, I was wondering about that, Libby. So it's a specific location that we're approving?
Does it drive around?
Yeah, yeah. We thought that that would be an ideal spot, and kind of make that its home, rather than, it's not really set up to bounce from place to place like an ice cream truck, because it does have some cooking equipment that's on in the truck. So, that really needs to cool down before it moves to.
And that's why you talk to the airport as well?
And you've gone to the airport.
Yes. They, we've been approved through their commission, pending approval of this board.
Okay. All right. Seeing.
Just a quick question. I know there's a precedent for this type of license out there. Is implicit in the agreement is the fact that the, that the applicant will monitor trash and pick everything up at the end of the day? Is that?
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
Is that a requirement?
We generally make it a condition of your approval.
We do, okay.
And I noticed that the health department hasn't quite signed off yet either, so obviously, that needs to happen, too.
Yes.
Okay. Well, let me close the public hearing, if we're going to discuss. And seeing no other comment from the public, we'll close the public hearing. And any other comments then from the group here?
Well, I think Bruce's is a good one. So we will assure administrative, either in our request or the health departments, that pickup is, is required. I mean, you're going to do it anyway, but.
Yes.
All right. Bobby?
I'm assuming that the truck goes home at night. It's not.
Oh, yes. Yeah. Yeah, no, it has a home.
The blue truck.
Right.
Any other comment?
Blue garages.
If you're sitting duck out there.
It escapes the HDC anyway, so we'll give it that. All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
I move approval.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Public hearing to consider application for new common vicular license for Nantucket Pastry Company. Nathan Coe, manager for premises located at 10A Broad Street, Nantucket. Open the public hearing.
Hi there.
Hi.
I'm Nathan Coe. It's actually pasty in the whole of America is calling them pasties.
Thank you.
But I'll come up with a fun campaign to sort that one out. Yeah, it's, it's another fast food takeout concept to go in the old Lola Burger building on the strip, serving different varieties of, of meat and vegetable pies encased in a warm pastry, along with just drinks and ice cream, and pretty much focusing on just the pasties.
Okay. Thank you. Any other, anyone else here tonight to speak about the matter, for or against? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Thank you, Nathan. Comments, questions from the board? What's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Public hearing to consider application for new common vicular license for Nantucket Pizza. Denise Risingborough, manager for premises located at 17 and a half Old South Road, Nantucket. Open the public hearing. You're here to speak on the matter. Thank you.
Kenny Risingborough. So, it's pizza baked goods, and it's just takeout and delivery only. There's no, no seating on the premises.
Okay. Thank you. Kenneth, anyone else tonight to speak for or against the matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Questions, comments from the board?
Well, nice to see you moving forward. Well, nice to see you moving forward.
Excellent. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Bobby.
I just want to make sure that the applicant knows that there's still some approvals that he needs from the other boards, right? Just because we're approving, it doesn't mean that...
Right. I think administratively, we always make sure all those things are signed off before we complete the deal.
You understand that, Kenneth, right? Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Excellent.
Then I vote aye.
And we got it unanimous. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, I'm going to recuse myself from the next five items.
Okay. Thank you, Bruce. Numbers, next item, open a public hearing to consider application for new common vicular license for Crew Ac LLC, doing business as Crew. Jane Stoddard, manager for premises located at One Straight Wharf, Nantucket. Is anyone here tonight to speak on this matter? You were hiding way in the back, Jane. I didn't see you. That's all right.
Hi, I'm Jane Stoddard, and we have submitted this along with an entertainment license application.
Okay. Let me ask the public, is there anyone here tonight to speak for or against the matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and ask the board if there's any questions. Seeing none, what's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Second.
Before you walk back down, Jane, I'll just, all right. Public hearing, we're going to open the public hearing to consider application for new entertainment license for Crew Ac LLC, doing business as Crew. Jane Stoddard, manager for premises located at One Straight Wharf, Nantucket. This is entertainment license, and you want to tell us what you're doing?
Yes, everything is normal and customary with other restaurants on island. We had filled out the form. It's to have music, TVs, radio, and everything within our regular sound system. That's normal for, in restaurant practice.
Okay.
I don't know if there are any questions.
So it's, as Jane describes, is there anyone here tonight to speak against or for the matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Questions from the board? Just, oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
We are DJs at some point, but through the regular sound system, not huge speakers or amplified.
Says DJs for weddings, special events.
But what, I mean, for evenings, for, in that occasion, for special events at the restaurant, but not...
Only for weddings and special events.
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Wait, I just want to clarify, it's, you're requesting for DJs anytime, or DJs for special events only?
For weddings, as well as special events that we would do at the restaurant, not necessarily closed for private functions.
What constitutes...
In a special occasion. But it wasn't, one thing that we had clarified on here, it's not a DJ system with huge speakers or anything different than the normal restaurant speakers. With DJ, it's in that mindset where it's something that's run through a regular system.
Okay. Do you have a question for?
No, you can close the public hearing.
Okay. Close the public, is anyone else? I'm sorry. Sorry, Josh, I didn't see you. All right, we'll close the public hearing. Questions from the board? Further questions? Yes, Bob?
Jane, a couple things.
Sure.
What constitutes a special event? I know what a wedding is, but obviously, but could you decide you're going to have a vog, you know, triple-eight night and crank up a DJ? I mean...
I think the thing, the parameters with it, I guess, for a special event, it, with the way that we were looking at it being a new business is it could evolve into anything is what Jonas is alluding to, what you are as well, but that the volume and the way that it's done is no different than a normal Friday or Saturday night. It just would be someone else is picking the music instead of it being in that way. But it wouldn't be that all of a sudden it would be ten times louder or it'd be a different system. It's...
So it's through the current?
Through the current system, like our Sonosound system and restaurant speakers. It wouldn't be elaborating from that in a different way or any louder, more extravagant than regular business.
Okay.
Along those lines, the past occupant in that space would turn the music down at eleven o'clock at night or close the windows, because there are people that sleep in those boats, close proximity. I would, I, there's nothing here that says that you're going to do that. I'm a little concerned that, you know, at midnight, poor Mr. Bassett's going to be getting calls from my rate, boat people.
And we spoke with him in particular about it, as far as the boat basin and guests down there, and I'm hoping we have a very open dialogue. We have no interest in disrupting anything that's down there. We weren't told of any restrictions, more than any other venue, obviously being on the water and people being on their boats in the same way with other waterfront places down there. We understand it's a unique location and want to be respectful of the tenants, but we're under the impression that we could have music and do everything else as far as a business is concerned until 1:00 a.m., as far as closing doors and windows and making it something, you know, to accommodate any sort of complaints. We want to be able to be amenable to that.
Okay.
Just to follow up, was there a restriction on the prior license? That's our...
I don't think, I don't know if there was a restriction.
It was just customary, maybe, Bobby?
There was an agreement between, I believe there was an agreement between the boat basin and the past tenant that at ten o'clock at night, or eleven o'clock at night, they would either turn the music down or close the outside windows facing the boat. I don't know if it was...
Was formalized?
There are former licenses in your packet, and they're only allowed from 8:00 p.m. to midnight.
Amplified instrumental and vocal music.
Yeah, our current lease has no restrictions, and in speaking with George Bassett, he didn't request any to be placed in.
It sounds like the restrictions on vocal music, which is, again...
Just on the roadblock license.
Yeah, yeah.
It said amplified instrumental and vocal music, hours 8:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m.
Yeah.
That was what was there previously.
Well, I guess as we do in other things, it's sort of like we can approve it and see what happens, and if they...
That's what I was going to suggest.
If we have to deal with the boat basin has to, then they will.
That's what I was going to suggest. I mean, typically, I think the attitude is, let's see how it works. You understand we can come back and have the conversation if it's not working, so. Is he all right with that, Bob?
I guess.
I just, sorry, I'm Jane Disforni, I'm Carlos Adolfo. One of the reasons why the DJ was even considered, I just want to explain, isn't necessarily that's a DJ to set up, it's that a lot of times the bartender ends up doing that job, as to remove that job from the bartender and move it so that it was in a different area, and that's where the setup was. And we just want to make sure that we were very upfront, and that's what we wrote in our license.
That's what I put it on there.
Okay. All right, well, any other questions from the board? Do I have a motion?
Did you close the public hearing?
I think I did. I think I did it twice, actually, because I did it, then Josh spoke, and I did it again.
A double closure.
I did a double closure. I was hoping no one would notice.
I'll move approval.
All right. Do we have a second?
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Where am I? We are number nine. Open a public hearing to consider application for new common vicular license for Joseph V Arno, doing business as Arno's Breakfast and Seafood Restaurant. Joseph V Arno, manager for premises located at 41 Main Street, Nantucket. Mr. Arno's here. Open the public hearing. Anyone speaking in favor of the matter? Mr. Arno?
I think, I think you know how I operate a restaurant. I'm just, if there's any questions.
Okay. Anyone from the public want to ask questions?
Is this like a revival of Arno's of old?
Come back to old school.
Arno's revisited. Anyone else from the public here to speak for or against the matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, but wait one second in case the board has questions for Mr. Arno. No, thank you, Mr. Arno.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Open a public hearing to consider application for new annual all-alcoholic beverages. Restaurant license for Joseph V Arno, doing business as Arno's. Sorry, Mr. Arno.
You have.
Breakfast and seafood restaurant. Joseph V Arno, manager for premises located at 41 Main Street, Nantucket. Request for determination that the premises licensed to sell alcoholic beverages is not detrimental to the educational, spiritual activities of a church or school pursuant to Section 16C of Mass General Law, Chapter 138. It's about the proximity to St. Mary's again, so...
And that second part is not really part of the public hearing, just so you know.
Oh, okay.
You're not happy you closed it.
Okay. So we open the public hearing with respect to the...
Liquor license.
Liquor license. Anyone here tonight to speak for or against the application for liquor license? Arno's has had one for years. I think we're good. Close the public hearing. Any comments from the board?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, do I have to do a vote on that determination?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll do a separate vote on the determination with respect to its proximity. I read it before, but to St. Mary's? Any issues?
There's more than one church.
Motion.
It doesn't say specifically one church. It just says many churches.
You get the method. Motion to exempt.
All right.
Motion to, yeah, Bobby, so you're moving to make the determination as outlined?
Make determination that it's not a detriment.
It's just a question then, it's not about how far or close it is, it's just about proximity.
I think it's fifty feet, it's within five hundred feet.
Five hundred feet.
That's why I went there. So I have motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Arno.
Okay, Mr. Arno, now you can go.
Now you can go. Sorry about that. All right. We're going to open a public hearing to consider alteration of premises of seasonal all-alcoholic beverages in holder license for Nantucket Island Management LLC, doing business as Jared Coffinhouse. James Story, manager for premises located at 27 and 29 Broad Street, Nantucket.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Bill Hunter here on behalf of the applicant. You may recall that about a year ago, the, a portion of the JC premises was broken out in order to accommodate a tenant. It was the Brick House Bistro. And now that the tenant no longer occupies the space, I'm here on behalf of the applicant to ask you to reconfigure it. In other words, put it back together where the premises will be as it was prior to Michael Sergeus running the Brick House Bistro. It's the addition of the upper patio, a portion of the kitchen, and the dining room.
Okay.
So we just go back to status quo.
All right. Anyone else here to speak for or against the application for the alteration or to the return? Yes, Josh?
How's Billy?
You have to come to the mic, though.
Who's that?
Thank you. Jonas, I keep saying, sorry.
Hi, sorry, Jonas Baker. Just wondering, who's going to actually hold the license and hold the LLC that will operate Brick House Bistro?
They're not. Brick House Bistro is not coming back, so it's the JC house that will be operating the JC house. We don't have a tenant.
So will anybody, will there be liquor served? I'm trying to just figure out who's going to serve liquor in the Brick House Bistro and what license it will fall on.
Brick House Bistro is no longer there. In other words...
That one's gone.
That's gone. So it's just back to the Jared Coffinhouse.
So if the Jared Coffinhouse, just to sort of play it out, chooses to serve an alcoholic beverage to someone sitting in the space that used to be the bistro, that will be allowed?
It will, yes. It, in other words, it's the premises prior to Michael...
I understand, that's okay. So Jared Coffinhouse will hold the license and will operate, and the funds from that rep, from Brick House or whatever will be through Jared Coffinhouse.
No more, no more Brick House. Just to be clear about that.
And they're not going to produce or anything, so they're gone.
So it's just the Jared Coffinhouse now.
So James Story will be the manager, and he'll be the, he'll be the name on the liquor license.
Exactly. Yep, that's exactly right.
Thanks, Jonas. All right, anyone else? All right, we'll close the public hearing and ask the board questions. Have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then there's second item here as well, request for determination that the premises licensed to sell alcoholic beverages is not detrimental to the educational and spiritual activities of a church or school pursuant to Section 16C of Mass General Law, Chapter 138.
I move that it's not detrimental to the education or spiritual activities of the church.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Finally, on the public hearings, we open the public hearing to consider applications for change of manager, change of corporate name, change of doing business as, and petition for transfer of ownership from Face Seafood Shack, Nantucket LLC, doing business as Face Seafood Shack at the Rotary. James Alfred Shepherd, manager to Nantucket Rotary LLC, doing business as the Rotary. Lisa Soder, manager for premises located at One Sparks Avenue, Nantucket. Tape change? Tape change. Sorry. This is, good?[1415.41]
Good evening, I'm Lisa Soder, and I'm here with Bob Cochran. We're both representing the Nantucket Rotary LLC, and we're happy to answer any questions you might have in connection with our application.
Excellent. Thank you, Lisa. And any questions from the public first? Anyone here to speak for or against? So we'll close the public hearing, seeing none, and ask the board if they have any questions about the application, seeing none. Or Rick?
Just to make sure we know what we're doing here. This is the one where we do have some contrary opinion or a letter asking us not to proceed?
Correct.
Correct? And it sounds like there's a lawsuit involved. I think it deserves some attention from the board, whether we're walking into a situation that we don't need to be involved in, or what are we up to here?
My understanding is, Rick, that we're here to extend the license or not, or to make all these changes, there's a few of them, that the litigation is a separate matter, and should that, depending on where that goes, it will take its own course. So it's not really necessarily part of our strict decision as far as the extension of the requested changes. So, and maybe town administration can inform that a little bit better.
We sent the documentation about the dispute to town council, what we had received, and they advised, as the chairman said, that this is a civil issue, and the board's approval or not has no bearing on that issue.
Bruce?
I understand that. It's kind of struck me that one of the things that's being applied for here is a change of ownership, which is, whereas, Patty, the way you explained it was that the existing ownership was just making some changes, but the change of ownership caught my eye.
Yeah, maybe a follow-up to that might be that if we have no obligation to determine that the applicant is the proper owner, Patty, I'm just trying to follow up and separate the issues.
It does say transfer.
What if the other party had come in and made the same application? I mean, I don't know who, is this a question of who gets first to the bar? If it isn't, that's fine. I just don't know that I know for sure.
I remember, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Madam Chair.
Sure.
I remember a year ago, we granted a liquor license to the other applicant, and then the restaurant never opened.
Can't hate it.
A year ago, we granted a liquor license to the last applicant, and for whatever reason, it never opened. Now we're just, my understanding of this is we're just changing the, change of manager, change of name. So we're just transferring that liquor license to the new manager. Now whether there's a civil, you know, case between the two as to ownership, I don't know if we get in the middle of that. I don't believe we do. I think we just transfer the license to the person who says they're the manager at this time. Now, do we need legal, council says that we're good here, so I trust that they're correct.
They basically just said it's not our issue with regard to what's before you.
And I would say that if we did take a step to make it our issue, then we would basically be sitting in judgment, which is not really our role either.
I used to, that gets a step closer.
Right.
On the other hand, if we approve it, then I think that there's, in their dispute, that may be an indicia of their ownership, one step further than they had before we acted. I'm not saying we don't do it, and I'm going to, I think, take council's advice, but I don't think you want to do it without some knowledge of what you're doing, Patty, that's all.
No, and I understand that. We did receive a letter from the dispute, sputent, I suppose is the word, in the challenger. But again, in these matters, I think it's important for us to rely on council with respect to what our actions need to be. So that's at least my opinion.
Did council give us something in writing? Was there an email to that?
There was an email. I'm not seeing it in the packet right now, but I can forward it around to you guys tomorrow.
Okay. Any other questions? Bruce?
It still kind of troubles me, because we're taking at face value that the ownership percentages are what they are. I mean, and I don't even know how town council could have checked the ownership percentages.
Or did they? Did they just accept the application given?
Yeah. Just-
I don't know. They were sent the application, and we got the advice that we got. So I can send it around, you can table it, whatever. But my recollection is that they indicated that it was an issue that was beyond the board.
Meaning that if, did they speak specifically to the concern, though, whether or not that our essentially recognizes it gives more credibility to one side or the other, or not recognizing it? That's-
I don't recall exactly what it was, but I think the gist of it was that it's an issue that is, should be solved civilly, not by you.
Right. I mean, that's what concerns me, is that, right. The civil conversation's going to happen, and I don't see much weight in that conversation saying the Board of Selectmen extended us a license as giving grounds for ownership. But I'm willing, personally, I'm willing to take a week and maybe put this off.
It might be good we could see the email itself, and that might help us understand more completely what council was responding to.
And Lisa, did you want to weigh in on that possibility?
Yeah. Can I interject on that? We are trying to open for this season, and this is the public hearing, and the next one wouldn't be until-
No, no, I'll have you on next week.
Because we still need to go through the Liquor Commission to get these changes made. So if, the more we delay here, the more we delay being open with a wine and malt license. But if it gives you any comfort in this regard, we did inform the judge in the litigation that we were intending to open this season, and she said she thought that was good for all concerned. So.
Well, I'm not trying to hold up.
Wait.
I think we should make sure that the council has heard the information that has been presented. And so I think we need to have the council revisit this and come up this week, so that next week we can make a determination.
So we wouldn't have to re-advertise if we continue the hearing to next week, and we can dispose of it promptly?
And I know it delays, and I apologize for that, but I think that, given the nature of the concerns from the number of board members, that we will have council look at it, but we will make a commitment to have this on the agenda next week, so that you're not waiting for the next public hearing. Is that the pleasure of the board?
I think that makes sense.
So I need a motion to continue the public hearing?
So moved.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We'll see you next week. All right, thank you. All right, that's the public hearing section of the agenda. Town managers' report is next. Libby, the first item? It's a report on meetings attended 12th and 13th of April with General Services Administration, Cape Cod Managers, Cape Cod and Vineyard Electric Collaborative, and Cape Cod Selectmen and Counselors Association. Count Silas?
Okay. Last Thursday, I had a bunch of meetings Thursday, and then one on Friday. On Thursday, Kara and I, Kara Bosnowski, DPW Director, and I met with two representatives from the General Services Administration regarding the FAA land in Mannequett that has been identified as a site for a potential wastewater treatment facility. And we've been talking about this land for about 10 years now. In any event, where we are with it, to make a long story short, is the portion of the land that could be used for a wastewater treatment facility, the entire parcel, let me back up a second, has undergone an endangered species survey, a comprehensive intensive endangered species survey. And it basically indicates where you can and can't build, and areas that can and can't be disturbed for endangered species purposes. There still is yet to come an archaeological survey. That has not been done yet. There's also an issue about mitigation. If there is to be a wastewater treatment facility on a portion of the site, there will be an issue with mitigation with the state's natural heritage program. So what we talked with GSA about at this meeting was getting a survey done that would identify boundaries for the portion of the land that would be used for the treatment facility only, and then the rest of the parcel, which is subject to a negotiated sale between GSA and the town or partners of the towns, that we have not, what's the word, officially affiliated with yet, but have had some informal discussions with other conservation groups about the potential purchase.
It was artfully said, well done.
It's tricky. We also discussed the fact, so there's a survey that the GSA is going to do, and that'll get underway shortly. We also discussed the archaeological survey, which gets a little bit complicated, because in order to do the archaeological survey, the ground will have to be disturbed, and natural heritage is saying you can't disturb the ground until you have a conservation plan for the entire property, which requires a sign-off from the property owner, which is not really us, it's GSA. And the archaeological group from the state, Mass Historical, is saying, well, we don't care about the conservation plan, you have to do the archaeological. So we're going to have a meeting with the state groups, the federal group, and us to discuss how to proceed with the archaeological. Lastly, we discuss an appraisal of the negotiated sale parcel. So we've been talking quite a bit about the endangered species issue, and the lack of infrastructure issue, and the unsuitability of the property for development. And all of those factors, and any other ones that we might be able to utilize in the appraisal to determine or have input into the ultimate cost, will be taken into consideration by them. So we already have been working on an appraisal, and we'll continue to do that with, now that we have the endangered species report, that will be a critical part of it. Any questions?
Questions? Whitey?
Have we done a trade-off analysis between using Surfside wastewater treatment plant versus using the FAA property?
As we've discussed previously, the analysis of alternatives to a Mannequett wastewater treatment facility will be undertaken in the update to the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan, funding for which was just approved at the 2012 annual town meeting. So that will get underway shortly, and that analysis will be undertaken in that effort.
So we don't know the results, of course, because we haven't done it, whether it would be more appropriate to go to Surfside as opposed to the FAA property.
Well, we don't know the cost, we don't know if it's feasible. There are a lot of unanswered questions about that, all of which will be looked at, and obviously, we can't move forward in any event with the FAA land until some of those questions are answered.
Yeah, I guess it's a timing issue.
It's a timing issue, and it's a bit of a chicken and the egg issue as well. That's something that we've been struggling with for a while. So that's going to continue to be something to balance.
Patty, if I could-
Rick, yep.
Just, who orders the appraisal specifically?
We have, and they want to give us, they want to work with us, as they put it, on a scope of services for the appraisal.
The GSA?
Yes.
So it's, we're compatible?
It's sort of, yes.
We're being friendly?
Exactly, yes.
I think, just to follow up on Whitey's question, because I know this has been an issue for some time, because we did approve an article at town meeting to undertake these expenditures, and they're coming out of that article, I assume, our costs are.
Yes.
And we're all trying to balance an important piece of property, make sure it doesn't go the wrong direction, and somewhat minimize our upfront costs, and hopefully they're transferable or usable, no matter who acquires the property. And that's sort of been my understanding.
Yeah, we, the GSA's intent, and has been, is to deal with the town and the town only with the negotiated sale. And if we are able to acquire it with other funding from other sources, that's fine. And if we're going to turn it over to other groups or a group later, that's fine, too, but we're supposed to be there.
We're kind of the lead party here, and have that responsibility.
Yep. Okay, Bobby?
Is US Fish and Wildlife involved in this, though?
No.
Good.
Okay. Whitey?
This, of course, until we make this determination, the use of the possible PV solar out at the wastewater treatment plant would be, is on hold until this is resolved. Because if we are going to pipe the sewage to the Surfside, then we have to make changes to accommodate that in order to have the PV solar there. So the PV solar is held up until this decision is made. So there's a ripple effect.
Okay. Thank you for that. Anyone else? Questions, comments? Thank you, Libby.
Okay, then Greg and I went to a Cape Cod managers' meeting in, where was it again?
Chatham.
Chatham. Thank you.
Chatham.
And one of the things, they had a kind of a lengthy agenda this week, and one of the things that we discussed was, if you recall, we joined in with some other Cape towns on a regional grant, what's it called, a challenge grant through the state for regionalization efforts. And permitting software was one that we signed on to, and the Cape group was awarded a $500,000 grant to pursue the idea of regional permitting software. And they were asking for four, three or four towns to be pilots to get going on the permitting software. So we volunteered ourselves to be a pilot program. It is going to take some dedicated resources and time to do that, and they wanted to be sure that all of the towns that volunteered and were sort of approved to be pilots can take it on. So we're working on that now. We'll schedule a conference call with them shortly. In fact, I need to get back to them about that. And they're very excited about it, though. Yarmouth was the lead town in getting the grant, and we're going to be establishing a staff work group to help get through. But that was exciting.
Just one, it seems like the nice thing for us is that our unique features in permitting kind of get involved upfront by being one of the participants in the test.
Yes. And as we found out and learned, every town says they have unique little things about it.
And I'm sure they do. They have historical processes that are all going to change, but-
Right. And they have weird permits that nobody else issues. And in any event, all that will be ironed out. And they've got an, they want to get an RFP out by the end of June for the permitting software. So it's a quick ramp up, but we're up for it.
And at least on the dollar side, since the grant is going to cover all the costs, we're providing sort of labor and support, but not dollars? Is that the idea?
Well, there may be, that is something we need to find out. There may be some funding that you have to put up for licenses, depending on how many licenses you would get within your town. But I don't think we're talking a lot of money, and we'd have to do that anyway.
That's down the end of the road.
Yeah. Okay. We also talked about, they were talking quite a bit about CMAS issues, and if you remember, CMAS is the facility that many of the towns have their trash hauled to and incinerated there. And the contract is up, I guess, with the various towns over the next year or two or three. And so they're in this complex negotiating process. And we didn't pay too, too close attention, because it didn't really affect us. But it was quite interesting, because obviously, we're sort of contained here, and we don't have some of the issues they do, yet we have some issues that they don't. So it was just an interesting discussion.
Let me just, if I might, Patty?
Sure.
On that one, but I'm trying to think, remember whether C and D for those towns go to CMAS, or whether it goes separately? Because we are an exporter of C and D.
I think it went separately.
And ultimately get involved, I don't know.
They had a whole other place, I think, where they were sending C and D to, and there was an issue about whether it went by truck or rail. And, but I don't think CMAS takes the C and D. I could be wrong on that, but nobody was talking about taking it there. We had a couple of other, just minor things. We had a discussion about recently settled union contracts, and we talked about ours a little bit, and people were, I think, intrigued about our wage structure change, our compensation schedule change. And it seemed that most of their, most of the contracts that people brought forward were being settled between 0% and 3% for across-the-board increases. So we felt like we were within that range. Greg and I then, the meeting ended, and Greg and I met with the attorney for the Cape and Vineyard Electric Cooperative about whether or not we could join that. And really, you are supposed to be in, all of the communities that are involved in that are N-Star customers, and we're not. So we can't really get too, too much out of joining, but they did say that there are a lot of technical issues that if we ever have, and if we were members, that they could maybe help with, when they have time. It was, still, it was a bit interesting.
Just to follow up one more time on that one, is that, are they primarily purchasing electricity on behalf of towns, or what does, are these the folks who are getting involved with the alternative energy production?
This is, yeah.
What you read about in the paper and all those?
Yeah, the Cape Light Compact, I think, is the purchaser. And this group does, they're working on net metering as well, solar, wind, conservation.
It sounds like, when you read the Cape Cod Times, there are a lot of tussles going on over there between the communities and the county, and sometimes we can thank our blessings, we don't have to get involved in too much of that.
Well, then, I went the next day to the Cape Cod Selectmen's and Counselors Association meeting in Bourne by myself. And we talked about-
How you were supposed to go.
Big meeting, that day.
Luckily, the town managers this time were invited, if you recall, unlike last time, when I was dragged along, but I wasn't actually invited, as I found out painfully later during the meeting. In any event, the main topic here was wastewater.
It made you an insider, you got all the scoop your friends didn't get.
I certainly did, that's right.
Just use my name, pretend it broke.
Right. You look a lot like that.
They talked about wastewater, and there were a number of speakers, including Paul Nidzwicki from the Cape Cod Commission, Larry Ballantyne, who's a Harwich selectman, Andrew Gottlieb from the Cape Cod Water Protection Collaborative, and Dan Wolfe was present. He wasn't really a presenter, but he said a few things. And there is a great deal of controversy over there about wastewater and wastewater issues, which I didn't realize the extent of it. It's pretty deep. And there was a lot of discussion about how people shouldn't pay attention to every single thing that they read in the paper, and people should be really clear on their facts before they say them. I guess some of the people in the room that this was directed to, but I didn't know who exactly all the players were. But it was really quite interesting. One of the really interesting things that they're working on, that they're unveiling at a Smarter Cape Conference in May, is a web-based, what they called, solution process or a technical tool, that will involve mapping the entire Cape and delineating all of the wetlands and baymans and estuaries. And you will be able to, I guess, either buy into it or become some part of a regional effort, where you can have your town mapped out and identify all of the alternatives that might be available to you for wastewater protection, water protection purposes. And it'll calculate for you costs based on a certain threshold or kind of a base cost that they've developed, plus rate, what your rates would have to increase by, and any tax rate impacts. It was really interesting. I'd be curious to see it. They, I don't know if they had a name of it. It's being unveiled at a conference in May called Smarter Cape. There might have another name to it, that-
And this is a Cape initiative, so that mapping Nantucket is not part of the game?
Nope.
Gotcha. It's a, they're-
I didn't even want to ask.
They're so different when it comes to wastewater than we are. We are so, in many ways, light-years ahead of them, by the fact that we actually have a sewer system here, and we already built a treatment plant. Well, some of these towns have no sewers at all.
And some don't want them.
Yeah, they're fighting, do they spend money in the town or at the county level? And there are a lot of tussles going on here.
Yep. They talked about examining a whole variety of options, including an outfall pipe, which I guess has been a little bit controversial over there as well. Andrew Gottlieb mentioned that they're currently developing a plan to gain input as to an open public process for the analysis that will be done to address declining water qualities. What kind of a problem is it? Is it economic? Is it environmental? Is it legal? And they're going to be recommending that to the county commission, but he was emphasized that they haven't recommended anything yet. They're in that, those early stages. So it was, it was really very interesting.
They're going to be mandated by the Clean Water Act, though, to do something.
Well, they're being sued right now by the Conservation Law Foundation, and I believe the Cape Commission might be suing the DP.
There's a lot of lawsuits flying around.
They've got some real issues that we don't have, luckily.
And one of which is cost. And one of the gist of the conversation was, each town going in on their own is going to be really costly, and if they can get in on some kind of a regional effort with joint treatment facilities and things, it could be less costly, but there's individual towns-
FALMS looking at a, last I read, $480 million price tag.
Just huge numbers. And Chatham's underway, so.
Do they have any idea if the poor treatment on that end is affecting us over here, and is it too much?
I don't think they have any idea. If, I guarantee you, though, if they start talking about putting an outflow pipe somewhere in Nantucket Sound, it'll have a great effect on us, and, you know, look how many years they fought over the one coming out of Boston into Cape Cod Bay, and they're still, still not sure, the verdict on that one. So, you know, they have a lot of issues with their hearing runs as well, because of the-
And Bobby, that's a good point, because as long as they don't clean up, also, even without a pipe, Patty, they're draining into Nantucket Sound.
Right.
So we do have an interest in that sense.
Yeah. The way the water flows in Nantucket Sound, it's flushed out before it comes across the sound. It really, there is kind of a barrier there in between, but-
But it must affect the fishing far out, further out, or, no?
We haven't seen any effect on it yet, you know? There is some questions about where the algae blooms come from and things of that nature, for sure. You know, that's why it's kind of, it's kind of comical that, in one respect, they're not, they're sort of burying their heads in the sand and saying, we don't have the money, we don't want to deal with it, there's really, it's not an issue. But yet, the state and the federal government right now are about to declare all of Massachusetts waters from P-Town down and all of Nantucket Sound a federal no discharge zone, just like Nantucket Harbor is. So you can't pump it out of your boat, but you'd be able to pump it out of your house right into the creek and down into the sound. So you can't pump it out of your boat, but you'd be able to pump it out of your house right into the, into the creek and down into the sound. So, yeah, they, they, they're going to lose, I believe, in the long run. If they, one way or another, they're going to be mandated, and probably it's going to be an unfunded mandate. But the courts are going to step in and say, you have to sewer.
Right. Oh, yeah, I mean, I agree. All right.
They also wanted to remind me and talk to me for 20 minutes about the meeting that they're coming here for on the 12th, Saturday, the 12th. They're arriving a little before 10:30. They want to get right out to the landfill and have a tour. They want you all to drive them there and back.
Where's Mr. Copco?
When we need him most.
Everybody with a.
All right.
We need a little help with the Brotherhood? Gee.
I think the Brotherhood's got us maybe lined up to be there, but they needed a cost, and they needed this whole breakdown thing, and.
Somebody's got to take the ball in this, actually, as a group. It's a party.
So you're going to need to be at the High Line at about 10:20.
Do we know how many there's going to be, because?
There's, there's a lot of people coming over, maybe 30, between 30 and 40, but they're not all going to the landfill. I'm, probably between 10 and 20 are going to the landfill.
I will step forward, and I'll help with this, so let me know what's going on.
Okay.
I, I think we'll all help.
Yeah. Does the landfill know they're coming?
Yes. Kara's totally on board, she's going to give them a tour, she's going to talk about it, she's going to get these options there.
One of his big vans from the four garage for the day, and I can shuttle them around, see what I can do. I'll make some calls.
Well, they, okay, see if you can get it for free, because they balked at the price that I gave them.
These guys are, these guys are very parsimonious, I've noticed, yeah.
Yeah, I know, is that true? All right.
Okay, so that was, that was it.
Whose idea was this, anyway?
Mr. Copco.
Will there be a gas allowance if we, if we transport them ourselves? Will there be a gas allowance?
Yeah. Twenty-two cents a mile.
This is parsimonious, too. Should we tell them that this is, should we let them know that this is the last year we're hosting them?
Yeah, really, but when do we start here? The second and last.
You can take one person.
My second item under the Town Managers' Report is a request for authorization to be the signing authority for the state revolving loan fund application documents for the Phase II-B downtown sewer rehab project and update to CWMP, both of which were approved at town meeting, and we need to start getting the applications together.
Do we need a formal vote of that?
Yes.
Motion to do it.
Thank you.
You just said.
All right, all in favor?
All right.
I just want to point out, too, that when we go to their meetings, they don't bus us anywhere or give us tours.
Or put us up, or pay for the room, or the boat, car, yeah.
Just, just saying. Provide the restaurant.
Just not go. Can we get the show span?
Who made these promises?
Would they mind sitting in the cage?
All right. Slickman's reports and comments. Acceptance of Article 68 Work Group Final Report, and we'll handle that piece first. We have Mr. Saperstein here as a representative of that, that group. And they've, we've had the presentation about the report already, correct? But you've made the necessary tweaks, right?
One's off the hook. Madam Chair, the report's in your packet.
Yep.
Copy of it here. Basically, it's a series of recommendations which we would hope you would accept and pass on to the Board of Health for implementation, because implementation was part of our charge.
Okay. Did you, by the way, Lee, did they, did they have that workshop? They did, right? There was a workshop.
Oh, my, yes. And all compliments to the Nantucket Land Council, who held it, was in this room for a total of eight hours, and that included a lunch break. Everybody who attended thought it was an excellent, excellent thing. So one of our recommendations is that there be a continuing series of workshops.
And I do want to say thank you to the Land Council. I saw it advertised, and I, and I'm glad it was well-attended and the like, so that, that's excellent. All right, so we want to make a formal acceptance of Article 68 Work Group Final Report.
Sure, I'd be happy to make that motion, and with our thanks, because the group put in an enormous time commitment, volunteer time, that we're all going to benefit from, and we want to make sure they understand how much we appreciate that.
And I, and I would say that we should add to that, as, as was noted, that we would send this to the Board of Health for implementation, too.
I'd just like to make a special point to thank Lee, because I found that your updates were very helpful.
You're most welcome.
All right, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Bruce. All right, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next matter, then, is a request for dissolution. Did I say that?
It's an ad hoc group, but we thought it might be a good idea to do that.
All right, we might.
Your.
Motion to formally let you off the hook.
Second. And again, but the same kind of thing.
Incredible applause. Wonderful document.
They were very thorough. They brought me their final file, their electronic set of files, and so they, they brought us all their research, everything that they, that they handled throughout the process.
I just want to remind you, Lee, that we have new committees coming up next month, so feel free to peruse through them and pick a couple if you'd like. We'd love to have you.
I actually think we should.
I'm still on roads to write it.
I actually think we should provide a copy, and I'm not kidding, to their Cape Cod selectmen when they show up here, because they obviously need some focus on water quality. And I think we're, we're really out distancing them if we're at the level.
It's a good idea.
I think we should. I mean, and again, I want to say thank you. Let's get this to the Cape as well, and to the Vineyard, and let them know what can be done with the stakeholders all speaking and talking together. Yes, Lee?
In terms of passing it on, I, I, I need to go back to the final report. The home rule petition, if we can get that forwarded to the state, that's as critical as, as getting the other material to the Cape.
Excellent. Thank you for that reminder. All right, so we have a motion in a second.
May I ask a question about that? Is someone already designated to do that? Is Richard doing that?
We can send it to the Board. I'll make sure it's, it's communicated, Libby, if you'd like, or you can call Richard.
I didn't know if you guys had talked about it.
The Board of Health meets tomorrow to deal with the regulation, but that's town regulation. The home rule petition, of course, goes to the General Court.
Okay, I didn't know if anybody had.
Through, like, through Dan or through?
Well, I can add it maybe to the petitions that I'm about to send, anyway, from town meeting.
Great, great.
That would be good.
Yeah, this was Article 77 of the town meeting.
We reaffirmed it this year, as I recall.
We, we brought it back up, and, and it was not called, so it was in the consent agenda.
Do we need to make sure that gets added in?
Yeah, I don't know if I have it here, but we'll get it later.
We'll figure it out.
We'll make sure it gets done, Lee.
All right, I don't think we've done a vote yet on the, the off-the-hook. So all in favor? Rick, all in favor?
Laughing, Lee.
Thank you. All right, thank you again. Consideration of requests from Airport Commission to extend, to expand the forensic audit of the airport. We've had a request to extend the audit. Mr. Drake is here. Want to give us a little backdrop there, Dan, on that?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, Dan Drake, Chairman of the Airport Commission. As you know, the Airport Enterprise Fund was sort of hit by a freight train back in, beginning in December in terms of its financial condition. Everybody was under the impression that, that the airport was very strong financially. And then, I guess, at the prodding of the DOR, the town's finance department started looking into it and, and found some, some problems in the management of the airport's capital accounts. And over the last several months, there has been a process going on to try to figure out what went where and what slot, what, where reimbursements came from, where they went, and so forth. And it's been, it's been a difficult process for everybody. Putting that in the context that I gather, I've seen the last three years audit reports and, and one of, from the year before that as well, which noted in the management letter that there were concerns about the airport's capital accounts. Given, it's not a question of trying to put any blame on anybody. It's a question of trying to move forward in a way that, that will benefit everybody, so we don't run into these problems again. We have an opportunity on the airport side now with, with changes in the finance department to restructure ourselves. One of the things we're working on, that some of you will hear more about tomorrow morning, is migrating all of our accounting to the MUNIS system. And these are things that we think would be beneficial. But again, we want to be sure that, that as we go forward, all the proper procedures and processes are in place for interactions between the airport and the town. And I think we can only get to that point by sort of looking at what has happened here and, and use it as, as a lesson going forward. The forensic auditor, the existing forensic auditor, I know, has spent some time on this subject and believes that, that, that the process should go forward in this respect. And the commission has, I believe the Finance Committee has already asked you to do this, to authorize this. And the Airport Commission is just joining in that request, because we really feel that it's in everybody's best interest to get a third, independent third party looking specifically at the airport and the enterprise fund situation. And given the complexity of our capital programs and so forth, to make sure going forward, we do everything the way it should be done.
All right, thank you, Dan.
I might ask, if you don't mind, Madam Chairman, whether Vice Chair Gasparo has anything he wants to add.
Sure.
Thank you. The only thing that I, I would add is that I think that it would be helpful to add a member of the Airport Commission to the steering work group in charge of the forensic audit. And I think that that would help to facilitate keeping, currently, right now, from the original forensic audit, there's no member of the commission that's part of, of that group. And I think that that may help to open the lines of communication and create a liaison between the work group and the audit that then could, much as you have liaisons that report back to your body, to keep the other members of the commission. Because as a body, you know, updated in public session, I believe is helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Art. Comments from the Board or Administration?
I have some comments.
Okay, Libby.
First of all, when the forensic audit was initially put forward, I think that a member of the Airport Commission was specifically excluded from the steering group. And I think that perhaps the reason for that has changed now. So the Board could certainly consider that, and probably the steering group should meet at some point soon. And that is the Chairman of the Audit Committee, the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, and the Chairman of Finance Committee. So we could certainly add somebody from the Airport Commission at the Board's discretion. Secondly, I would recommend that you table the request until the forensic audit is complete. And the Michael Daley report, which is looking at almost all of these exact same issues, which I've mentioned a couple of times at FinCom and Board meetings, is complete, as well as the Attorney General's report, so that we can determine if there is a need for an expanded, expanded forensic audit. And certainly, when those items, at least the Daley report and the AG's report are submitted, the forensic auditors perhaps could independently look at those items. There is an expense issue to be kept into consideration here, and we've, as we know, there's a financial problem with paying airport bills right now. So we might want to think about not adding to that until we've got what we initially asked for done.
Okay.
Just my opinion.
Comments?
Well, one, go ahead.
I, I, I'm perplexed by one element of this. It's probably the wrong time to be asking this question, but don't the other enterprise funds have to deal with many of these same issues? Like, doesn't the water company have capital expenditures that have to, that are funded partially by grants that have to be tracked and monitored?
Yes, not nearly so extensive as the airport, though.
But in principle, they're.
And it's really just the water company.
In principle, they are, but I think we find that the, for example, the landfills and enterprise fund, or I own Home is, but from a managerial point of view, they're really very close, and in a sense, part of the town. They're controlled through town administration. So the difference really is with the airport and the water company, Bruce. And the water company really doesn't have grants of, of any substantial amount that are subject to the same problems we've run into here. So they're similar, but not, not as an active issue.
Is there traditionally greater oversight by the town finance department over the, or more interaction between the town finance department and the water company department?
I mean, if I can jump in, just as an impression, given the conversations we've had over the years, it seems to me that the airport's always been very successfully resistant to any kind of oversight and have sort of, you know, walked a very distant line with respect to the response that they may provide to requests even from the town. And, you know, there's been a bit of a disconnect that I think we found to be part of the problem, frankly, Bruce. And so one of the things I believe we're pulling back on is that in particular. And when how that, you know, how that relationship is defined is really critical to this.
Okay, can I follow up real quick? Yeah, I mean, reading, reading the scope of, of the forensic audit request, I mean, it just seems as if, if we have thing, procedures that are working, maybe we should start, instead of reinventing the wheel from scratch, start with what we know works. And if it involves greater involvement by the town finance department, use that as a model rather than, you know, starting all over again, which would incur additional expense.
Yeah, you mean not go forward with an expanded audit, just wait and see what we, is.
Well, I, I think I agree with Libby that, that we might as well find out what the results of the first audit are before we expand it, although I would be curious to know from the Airport Commission people why they would feel differently. It just seems like, how do you know what you need until you know what you've got so far?
And maybe we can ask Dan that question?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. In a sense, the, the original forensic audit was instigated, as I understand it, to deal with primarily procurement issues and, and to see whether there were any indications of irregularities in the management of the airport, fraud or anything of that sort. So this wasn't really part of the scope of the financial, of the forensic audit at the beginning. It became part of the scope as they were, I mean, it became part of what they looked into, as I understand it. When they started getting into a couple of the projects, that they started looking at it from a procurement perspective. And so I don't, you know, I don't, I've seen a draft, I don't have a draft, but I've seen a draft report of the forensic audit. Whether that's their final report or not, I don't know. But it doesn't, it didn't, to me, give any real indicator of how the issue that we're talking about now might be addressed, or that, that they had addressed it other than on a very superficial level. I don't know whether they're going to say it needs more attention or not, frankly. It's not, as I say, part of the scope. The Attorney General's report, I don't know when, when, if ever, we're going to see that. You know, supposedly, it was written three or four months ago, and has been bouncing back and forth between offices on Beacon Hill since that time. The forensic, it's, there's a little bit of a dance of the goony birds going on, because again, as I understand it, the forensic auditor doesn't want to issue a report that, that might contradict what would be in a subsequent report from the Attorney General. And he wants to, he's being, there's a bit of sort of political posturing going on there. Now, I don't know what Mr. Daley's charge is and where that all is going to come out. But again, I think we have an opportunity soon to sort of restructure the way we're set up at the airport. I wouldn't want to go down one road and then find out we're going to have to do something else fairly quickly, with a different set of skills or whatever. And so, you know, my feeling, and I think the commission's feeling, is that this should move forward sooner rather than later. We obviously recognize there's a funding issue, and that, that piece of it has to be resolved somehow. But putting that aside for the moment, although it can't be, we believe it should move forward sooner rather than later.
My, you know, reaction a little bit, Dan, is, is, you know, first of all, not to want to assign motivation to Mr. Daley in terms of how he's structuring the release of his, his report. But beyond the concerns, or just sort of the feeling that we should see what's already been done before we expand on it, which I agree very much with Bruce on that, we've just hired a new manager. And bringing them into the process with the goal of moving forward with best practices in mind, I, I do feel it would be appropriate to include, at least include them in, in the conversation at this point, or him in the conversation at this point. And, and again, you know, it doesn't mean we've not done due diligence here. We've got an audit we haven't seen yet, and we can, we can take the time to see it. You know, whatever we can do to push the AG's office to get that report published, I think would be certainly something that I would encourage. But ultimately, you know, as we drove through this in the early stages, I, I believe we all had as a consensus that we wanted to see an application of not necessarily looking backwards, but looking forwards. And, you know, my sense is that until we get a little bit more on the board as far as the pieces, we, we probably should just be a little patient and see what comes. And, and especially getting, you know, Mr. Rafter here, with his expertise and his experience going through this together would be really helpful, from my, my point of view. Anyone else?
Patty, one thing, I think maybe a month ago, we, I think. Patty, one thing, I think maybe a month ago, we, I think, voted as a board to accept a recommendation from the Finance Committee to expand or to do a little bit more work through the forensic audit, which I think in some ways was not totally dissimilar from this. So one reason to think about tabling is to try and make sure those are sort of looked at because we did act at that time. And I'm, and want to make sure what that was compared to this.
Yeah, let's go back and look at that because my recollection was that we accepted the recommendation that a, a scope be developed. And I think the FinCom was supposed to go and develop it, and I'm not sure we got it.
Right, so it might be nice to dovetail a couple of those, sort of think through the process and bring this back in a week or two to see where we're going. I mean, that might be one way to handle, not dissimilar than your recommendation, Libby.
Bobby?
I'm going to be a little more blunt. I'm not going to vote for anything that involves spending with the airport until we get a handle on the spending that's going on there now. We went, just got the voters to approve a huge transfer of funds from the general fund and reserve fund and everywhere else. And this is going to cost money. And I want to see what the other reports come in and say, and I also want to know what other cap, what other expenditures out there we haven't seen yet because I think there's more. And, you know, we're, we're already going to have to have another town meeting in November to clean up some more of fiscal year 2012. And I'm done. I'm not approving any more expenditures until I know for sure how much it's going to cost and how it's going to be paid for. I don't care how little or how much.
Well, it might be good, Dan, to review the existing contract just so we know what the deal is. There was some...
With the auditor?
Yeah, with the forensic audit. And there was an existing contract that what, had two parts, $25,000 and then $75,000? Am I recalling correctly those emails? Bobby, I'm not saying yes or no, I just, it's nice to understand where we are on the contract.
Right, but if they're, my understanding is this is, this is an expansion of that contract and I can't vote for any more expansions or any more expenditures.
And following on the dovetail here, the fact of the matter is when we voted on that contract, we thought the airport was paying for it.
Right.
It's no longer the case. So, you know, the, the funding source is gone and as Bobby notes, you know, we have, you know, have asked the public to, to, to trust us in this and, and have spent an awful lot of money already. And I do believe we need, or at least owe them the consideration of seeing what we've got before we go any further. So while I understand there's concerns, continued concerns, and we'll have continued conversations, let's see what's going on, in my opinion, in the current report and push for that AG's report and stick to Bobby's line in the sand, which I would agree with. And, you know, at some point, we should be more definitive even to say, I don't want to see another penny spent out there until at least we get Mr. Rafter on board and he takes a good, hard look at things and reports back to us and to the commission about what next steps he would recommend. Whitey?
Yes.
One of the things that I've sort of observed, I, I spent the whole weekend working on getting the new manager here and, but one of the things I, I hadn't really fully appreciated is how the airport's revenues have dropped because of the recession. And when we made that decision of the, having the audit, I, I for one, thought that the airport was in pretty good financial position as far as revenue was concerned. The other thing that occurred to me when Patty was mentioning this before, that the clarity and the openness and the, between the airport and the town and the Finance Committee wasn't there. And so it was very hard to get good answers. It generally came back that the dog ate the homework. And it was very hard because of the resistance. And that won't really show up in a forensic audit. That's ex post facto. You don't see that in the numbers. You see it in the interviewing the people. And I think that was one of the problems that I was just shocked when I saw one presentation to the Finance Committee. You know, you're showing up and didn't have, have the data. Why didn't you have the data? Well, somebody's on vacation. There was a lack of clarity and, and I think that that put the town and everybody else in a difficult position.
Mr. Drake?
If I may say one more thing, and I'm going to be pretty blunt. The, I understand and appreciate the perceived lack of cooperation from the airport. The fact of the matter is that the Finance Department of the airport and the Finance Department of the town are very closely intertwined in the management of these capital accounts and have been for years. They may not have talked to each other the way they should have talked to each other, that's part of the issue. What is the information that needs to flow back and forth? But, you know, I don't believe the lack of cooperation caused the problems that we've been dealing with the last few months. And I understand and well, you know, appreciate your reaction, Mr. DeCosta, about airport spending money. One of the things I had thought when the Finance Committee made the proposal to you that, that possibly the money for this would come from the reserve fund, it's not just an airport issue, it's a, it's a town-wide issue of how to get this problem solved and on the right track. And I've said enough, I'll leave it at that.
Bruce?
I, I agree in particular with what Mr. Drake just said. I don't think it's an airport issue, I think it's a town-wide issue. And I, I'm not in favor of this specific proposal because it's, seems to be just an expansion of the, the airport-specific problem. I think we should work from the other direction and, and work from the, you know, the town finance department and top-down, do it right, so.
Absolutely. I, I would agree. I, I believe, Dan, that all of us are in agreement that it's a, it's a town issue. And I, and I would echo that, and I think you're absolutely right on target. But I do think that we have a continued obligation to sort of see the pieces as they emerge rather than over, overjumping it before we've actually had a chance to review what's out there. And I do think that, you know, there's a, there's a real sense from, at least what I'm hearing from the Board, that there's going to be a real reluctance to go to the reserve fund. And it's not because we're not trying to get to the bottom of things out there, but because it, it just doesn't feel like that's the right way to control it right now, that we, we need to take some other steps. And I would, I would believe, again, that bringing in the, the new manager would be a helpful component to that. But any other comments? Because we have a request ahead of, in front of us and that would require our decision. So we've, we've had discussion, I don't know if you want to keep on going around, but...
Well, one way to handle is to go back to, to Libby's idea, it's a table, it's like saying, certainly, it's saying no at the moment. And we'll just see how this plays out as we continue through the process, which, which we're doing two or three times a week already.
Yeah, and we could maybe get the steering group together again and have some additional more in-depth discussion and come back maybe to the Board with something?
What's the timetable? Any, I mean, you know, the AG's office, any word or...
Well, as Mr. Drake said, it, it's very unclear. It was supposed to be last fall, then it was in the winter, and then most recently, I think our attorney was told any day now and, and it's April now.
Right.
And we still don't have it. So I, I don't know what that is. The report I asked Michael Daley to come up with, which was basically a review of past practices and recommendations for improvement and perhaps why things happened the way they did, I expect within the next week or two.
Okay. Bobby, did you want...
I just, I felt like there was, this was a two-part thing. And the other was putting someone from the Airport Commission on the...
Oh, right.
On the steering committee. I, I'm, I have no problem with that. I, I would make that motion that we do that.
Or there a liaison, Bobby? I'm not sure it matters which, which way.
Yeah, either way, just as Art said, I think it's, you know, there was concern with the past Airport Commission. We have a different Airport Commission now. I think it would be good for one of, whether it be Art, whoever, they could decide, someone of their choosing, but I think it would be good to have them there just so they know what's going on. So, you know, I would address that right now and then we can, I, I would make that motion and at the same time, I would motion that we table this until we feel that we absolutely have to do it.
Okay.
I'll second both motions.
We have a, a double motion?
Chair.
All right, we have a motion, a second discussion on that? No, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you.
I'm going to abstain, Patty.
Okay. All right. We, next item on our agenda, review letter to National Grid regarding summer parking. I'm going to throw it right to Bruce.
Well, I hope the letter speaks for itself.
Right.
I took it as far as I could, but not knowing exactly who the signatories were going to be, I didn't want to put any more words in there or her mouth than was absolutely necessary. I think it captures the, certainly captures the essence of what I had in mind in terms of being clear that, that we really want a very narrowly defined agreement with them that allows us to use that lot for a brief period this summer with no further complications.
Can you kind of expand it because I think this got in the packet late and some people may have missed a little bit of what we're up to here.
Well, at last week's meeting, we had discussed the fact that, that National Grid's lot on Candle Street would be a wonderful place to experiment with some parking ideas and it, which, which may mean simply determining whether or not having some additional parking places during the summer would make a difference in terms of congestion downtown. Nobody really seems to know to whom the request should be directed. I, I did a little research and it was recommended that, that the best approach would be to start at the top and let, let the request trickle down on the theory that the, that the people lower in the organization would, would want to make the person at the top happy and would deal with it expeditiously as opposed to starting at the bottom and having it work its way higher, at which point the person at the bottom would be causing trouble for the person at the top. So that's why I directed it to the President of National Grid. I thought it would be appropriate to copy in everybody else who we've had dealings with. And, and I, I made it as comprehensive as I could. There may be other individuals who should be added to the list. And the other, the other open question in my mind was, I, I think personally it would be a good idea to follow up. We should send a letter and follow up with a phone call, but I didn't know who would, who would be the one to follow up. And again, I'd be happy to do it if that's appropriate, if, if the town manager should do it, whatever. But I, I would volunteer to do it as, as necessary. I, I would like, I need some help on some of the more formalities in the letter. I don't know specifically how we address Senator Wolf, whether it's the Honorable Senator Daniel Wolf or whatever, but I suspect that Erica knows.
I have my mismanner somewhere.
So.
Those are just C Cs, we don't have to worry too much about that. Who it would come from, Chairman or you all want to sign it?
I would actually, I would actually suggest it be Bruce if the Board is with me on this. And if you'd like to co-sign it, if you think the Chairman name would be something to help, that would be my only consideration. And, you know, and I say this because personally, I like the fact that there's initiatives from the Board members and they can run with them on their own rather than feeling, you know, that, you know, once done, it's sort of handed off. So at least from my sense, if it matters to have the Chairman's name as, as an endorsement, but if you wanted to just translate that, that the Board as a whole has agreed to do this, that would be, I think, appropriate personally.
Yeah, which is in the letter already.
Right.
The Board voted unanimously, it says in there.
Right.
I was optimistic in my expectation on the vote.
We're, we're going to the President of National Grid. I think if we're going to do that, we should go with the highest, in other words, it should be the whole Board or, or the Chairman with us endorsing so that we make sure that the, it gets proper attention rather than just, just a selectman. It should, should have a little oomph.
How about if we add a line at the end that says, Mr. Miller, Bruce Miller will be in touch with, with you at, you know...
That's fine.
That sounds good. We'd have the Chairman sign it with a follow-up that Selectman Miller will be following up. I agree with Whitey on that.
Okay. Makes sense?
Now, can, can, can somebody help me make it unofficial or...
Erica.
Thank you.
Erica's on it. All right, so I think we need to take a vote so we can actually say there's been a unanimous vote.
So moved.
So I have a second.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, there you go. At least that line's not changeable, so. All right, we are at the bottom of our agenda.
Patty, before we move on, phase two of the plan was hopefully going to involve a discussion with, regarding changing the parking regulations. And I wondered what we, what we need to do.
We have a tape change, so.
Okay. Do we need to have a, I'm, I'm, I would like to propose that we, we extend the enforcement hours of the...
Hold on, Bruce, he's changing tape. We're going to get you on tape, Bruce, so...
A tape change means be quiet for a minute. Just so you know.
Now, because the other TV's running, right? The public access station continues. So those cameras are secretly hidden in the ceiling, Bruce, so you don't actually know what they're doing.
Someone right here watching you at all times.
They look like little R2-D2s, actually.
Big brothers watching.
All right, we're back on? Get the thumbs up. All right, Bruce?
The, the second idea that I wanted to pursue expeditiously was the idea of modifying the parking, enforcement of the parking regulations downtown. They're currently, there are the two-hour enforcement areas, the enforcement ends at six, which effectively means they only end at four. I think the, the most intriguing idea and the simplest idea to implement with, in regard to parking, would be to extend the enforcement perhaps to seven, which would have a, potentially dramatic effect in limiting the ability of, of nighttime employees to park their cars at four o'clock and be there the entire evening. I only know of that idea because Chief Pittman mentioned it at, at one of your meetings last year, and it's stuck in my mind as a great idea. I, I would like to advance that and I, I don't know procedurally what we need to do. Do we need to have a public hearing? Could we invite somebody, Chief Pittman to come back and, and comment? Or can, you know, can we just blast ahead?
At the very least, we need to put it on the agenda so that...
We had an agenda meeting before this meeting, it is on the agenda for next week, the Chief will be there, based on your comment from last week.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, Chief was away this week, that's why we didn't have it on this.
Okay.
Excellent. So we got that covered. All right. Final item on the agenda tonight is the committee reports. So any committee reports tonight?
Patty, I have a follow-up from the Coastal Management Plan Committee. After further discussion with some of the committee members, I would like to formally request that we vote tonight up or down to make the Coastal Management Plan members special municipal employees. It'll take care of any questions about who can serve in the committee and who can't, or at least it'll clean up a lot of them. There may be still one committee member that may have to withdraw and will be replaced, but there's a couple others that have issues, so.
So, go ahead.
I think I can second that.
Okay. Whitey seconded it.
Whitey's, I made the motion, Whitey seconded.
Well, just to make sure we know, the idea of making them special is that whatever conflicts they may or perception of them get cleared up by making that designation?
Yeah.
And it's easier to do it for all of them rather than anybody specifically?
You don't do it, you do it for the whole committee.
That's the way it works?
Right.
Got you.
Okay.
But don't they individually have to come forward with their conflicts?
They do that anyway, but by making them special, I can't, I can't recite it like Lauren can, but I, we went through this last year when we had, when she came and met with all the committees. And she basically said at that time, I asked her specifically, should all of our committees be special municipal employees? And she said yes, so.
Since this is a new committee, I'm requesting it formally.
Okay. We had a motion and a second, more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just as a follow-up, we might, if that is a good idea for everybody, maybe we ought to think it through at some point in the future, Bobby?
Well, we talked about it last year and then we never really followed through on it anymore. We were going to look and see which ones were and which ones weren't. The majority of them are.
So it's a good follow-up item to...
Yeah. When we do the committee appointments, we might want to look at that and see, get a list from Lauren as to which ones aren't and maybe at that time make them.
Make them.
Got you.
Right? Any other committee reports tonight? Seeing none? Whitey, I'm sorry.
Shab voted a new Chair and Vice Chair. Peter Brace is now Chair of Shab and Doug Smitty-Smith is Vice Chairman. The Shellfish Management Plan was briefed, I guess it was yesterday or the day before. And that was their, almost their final briefing before they come before this group. There were concerns expressed there concerning how do we coordinate research, the various research projects around the Island. There's concern about how do we brand sculups? And the report generally was... And the report generally was considered excellent. And it will come before this committee for approval. And I don't think it goes to the state because this is sort of breaking new ground.
Thank you, Whitey. Any others? All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?[1789.76]